He's gonna actually hit home runs and jot now.
Yeah.
You get a championship.
I don't know that he's gonna win an ALMVP, but he'll do just fine.
How's it going?
Excited.
Thanks guys.
Me too.
Alright, it's four o'clock. There's a call in the present. We'll call this special meeting to order. Welcome our guests. And there will be an opportunity after our discussion for two, if anyone has any comments they'd like to make. Save them for then, please. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Spence and let you present your proposal.
Okay. Appreciate you guys coming in and revisiting the calendar and kind of take a look at our newest proposal and what that would mean. We'll take kind of a big aerial view of everything and then the administrators are back here. So as we go through this, jot down any questions you might have about specifically what things look like in each building. And they can maybe go a little bit deeper on some of these, but this is just kind of the surface level view to get us started. And then hopefully it'll be a kind of a back and forth discussion between you guys and our administration and myself. So the goals of today, united goal of creating the best calendar for all stakeholders. I really liked where we got last time agreeing that, you know, we all want the same thing and we all want the best calendar for all of our stakeholders. And I think that this is a good step in that direction. Discuss logistics of our options, overview with some follow-up questions and then leave with an idea, hopefully, of a calendar that can be agreed upon next Monday. So you have a hard copy there in front of you, that's Hybrid Calendar 2.0. Not the second calendar that I've tried, but the second one that I'm bringing to you, that's a hybrid model. The blue boxes are the no school days in the calendar. The biggest changes from this calendar to the last, you'll notice an extra week in May. So the 15th is the last day of school instead of the 8th, so there's five days there. It maintains spring break, but it pushes spring break back to the end of May and into April. That allows us to get Good Friday within spring break, which opens up another day there. And then there's a couple of other spots where we just decided, you know, what a five-day week might be a good idea in that month. April's a really good example, that third week of April. Typically when we do a lot of map testing and EOCs, so we can make that a five-day week so that we can get all of that done in that one week. So that's an overview. This kind of breaks it down with the math a little bit better for you to see. So on your left, you have the current days of our calendar. You'll see the 160 actual and the 1049 actual. Those are after our snow days and what we're assuming, we don't have any more weather outages, what we'll end up with at the end of the year. So we will end this year with 160 days and 1049 hours. Our current calendar, we were supposed to do 161 and 1089. The hybrid that I brought to you first would have been 146 days, 1073 hours. And the revised hybrid that you have in front of you is 155 days, 1092 hours. So actually more instructional time with just a few less days. And then you'll see the start and end dates, or start and end times, rather. Currently we're 8 to 3:15. First proposal was 7:45 to 3:30. So instead of 30 minutes, we moved that back to 15 and it's 7:50 to 3:20 would be our new daily schedule time. And I'll come back to this slide kind of at the end and leave that up there so you guys can see that a little bit more. So several different aspects of the calendar that, again, I'll just kind of cover on a surface level and we can go deeper into any of these. First of all, building schedules, the block versus traditional, that discussion. Due to staffing, student scheduling and graduation requirements, it would be incredibly difficult to change building schedules at this day, especially the middle school and the high school. However, all buildings will be open considering other scheduling structures in coming years, whether that be traditional, a modified block. There's a variety of different scheduling options that we could look at. High school and middle school will be looking at overall student attendance, GPA, RTI and I-ready data to measure student success. And then this data will be shared with the board and administration will consider other scheduling options. So we will look at that in the coming year to make sure that we're maintaining our level of success and attendance from our students that we've seen in recent years. Certified staff, all buildings will offer Monday activities in the form of remedial tutoring and enrichment activities on a limited basis. So those would be the Mondays, the no school Mondays. And those would be career ladder opportunities for staff. Maybe some externship opportunities for staff as well, where they can go to local businesses and kind of see what those businesses are doing, what they are looking for from our graduates. Especially at the high school level and in middle school, that allows our teachers to better get a feel of what our community is needing from our graduates for workplace opportunities. Students on those days will have off-campus opportunities. You know, we talked about externships for teachers. Internship opportunities are available. Obviously they can work, they can have employment during those Mondays. And then it's time for families to be together during those Mondays as well. Support staffing, less days will allow us to pay support staff. Specifically food service, paras and secretaries closer to the upcoming minimum wage of $15 an hour in January of next year will go to 15. We're exempt from the minimum wage requirement, but at the same time, if we're not paying our staff minimum wage, we're gonna have a hard time getting anybody to work for us. So while we don't have all of those positions under 15 an hour, where we're starting, a lot of them would be under that $15 an hour. So that would help us bump that up a little bit closer to that minimum wage. Maintenance and custodial are already on 12-month contracts, so they'll continue working as usual. They will work on new student days and that'll allow them some work time without interrupting classes. And it will help our cost efficiency in those departments. Bus drivers will continue to run routes when school is in session, allowing us to recruit and retain the best bus drivers we can, which is always a challenge to retain and get those bus drivers through the door. Couple of other notes on transportation while we're on that topic. The earlier start time, and Logan can speak on this a little bit more if you want some deeper details there. The earlier start time would not affect morning pickup time for students. They would still be picked up at the time that they are now. And then a later dismissal time would affect student drop-off times, extracurricular trips, substitutes and the Richards route. So when we're looking at where the time needs to go for that 15 minutes, logistically, it's a lot better for the district to put it on the front end than the back end. So that's why you see the 7:50 to the 3:20 time. Extracurricular activities, obviously, we would still have activities on no school Mondays. Campus will not be closed per se, just because we don't have school. There's still gonna be a lot going on on campus on those days, including practices, events. You know, it goes from FFA to FLOA and every other activity that, there's gonna be things on Mondays whether we have school or not. But it does allow additional flexibility to share our facilities, practice spaces, et cetera. Food and necessity needs, we continue our backpack food program through local agencies. We have a lot of great community partners that help with that backpack and food program that help get that in through our doors and then we are the distributor for kids. But we'll continue to look at that and hopefully maybe increase that a little bit in the coming years. Food service would be available to provide snacks for students on campus during Mondays. Talked to Regina, and as long as we have students on campus, we can provide them snacks through our food service program. Wouldn't be able to provide them full meals since we're not in school, but we could get them some snacks. And then social counselors will continue to assist students with their needs outside of school, which they do a phenomenal job of right now, and that wouldn't change. Special education, we're gonna ensure that all hours of our students with special needs are met. It's a legal requirement, so we're going to do that regardless of the calendar. We're gonna make sure that we meet all our hours for students with special needs. The district can use Mondays as needed for intervention or homebound hours for those students that are not on DMS. And it's obviously a priority that all students, including those with special needs, receive a full quality education. And we're committed to making sure that that happens. So that's the overview. I'll go back to that slide. Buses are done for the night. So like I said, our administrators can answer any specific questions you might have about how the buildings might look on those Mondays. And I'm happy to go deeper and we can go back to any of those slides that you'd like to go to.
On the sped, Logan or Dr. Spence, we have to do those hours regardless, as you say.
Yeah.
How will those kids be transported for those that have to be there? Are saying they have to come in or we have to do limb on those days?
We have to provide them hours. They don't necessarily have to come in. We could do that as a homebound if we need to on those Mondays. Or they could go, I mean, that's gonna be a case-by-case basis, because all those kids have a little bit different as far as needs.
I didn't know some required that here or.
Well, it depends, it depends. But we're gonna make, they have to get their hours regardless.
But is it cumulative hour, hours?
For the week.
Week.
Yeah.
So on the hybrid schedule, they would get them in those four days?
Ideally.
The majority of sped students.
But if they didn't, they might make other arrangements on that Monday.
Right, okay.
On a week that there's only four days, they would probably see them more hours than it was on a five-day.
For Logan.
There he is.
Clarify for me here, okay? The Richards route back to school, we have to have them down to West Plains in time to catch the buses from West Plains?
If we have a student that rides our bus that does ride a Richards bus, we do. So if you push that later in the afternoon, then that's.
They would miss down there.
Essentially miss the bus route.
You know, what time do they leave down there, do you know?
They're getting out about.
They're late in the schedule, aren't they?
I asked Cody the other day and I can't think, should've wrote it down, but it was, if you put more than five minutes, it was gonna, at the end of the day. It was gonna affect that roughly. I mean, you're gonna, I mean, it's pretty close, depending on, you know, the four lane.
Congratulations, by the way.
Oh, appreciate it, thank you.
We're gonna do a bigger thing next Monday. Transportation Department did it.
And then, and then the early morning thing, okay? You say right now our buses are getting here.
Yeah.
And so what's gonna keep the buses from then getting here 10 minutes earlier than what they are right now?
So currently, currently doors open at 7:30 at the school. At least half the fleet, if not two-thirds of the fleet are there or pulling in as we're unloading buses. Currently, we unload two at a time. You know, that could always be changed, you know, two at a time, but that means there's six or seven back lined up waiting to unload. So they're already in the parking lot. So their pickup times will not change. They've been waiting there, you know, we get, we're letting off at 7:30 because the doors open. School doesn't start till eight. So that's why the pickup times will not change. I mean, if you back it up five minutes, the kids are gonna still have time to eat breakfast.
You don't think the buses would start getting here earlier when you do that?
No, no, I wouldn't ask them to. I mean, right now, some of them are way too early as it is, you know, even no matter a time like, hey, slow it down, they can sleep five, 10, 15 more minutes. But, you know, even the longest ride and the shortest ride, it's, I mean, it's the same times every day. Now, the guys that make, that have the route set to where they hit that spot where there's no line of buses, you know, maybe they're affected by two or three minutes. You know, now they're gonna be waiting in line instead of, but it doesn't really, I mean, that's a bus that's leaving the schoolyard at, you know, 6:45. The kids, the first kids get on the bus at 7:00 AM, you know.
So is it early, should we pick up anybody?
No, no, I'm saying like the latest bus.
Okay.
The earliest buses, the earliest one you're gonna get on is between 6:15 and 6:20. And that's not gonna be affected because that bus is in the parking lot by 6:17, 6:20, waiting to get unloaded by 6:30. Or 7, sorry, my hours. You know what I'm saying? Like if you drive by the school at 7.
We're here at 7:15.
7:15 to 7:17, I've already got four buses lined up, ready to unload. You know, and then it's, you know, it's just boom, 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 boom. And everybody is unloaded off the bus before 7:43, even the Richards route that doesn't leave Richards until 7:25. So that's why the pickup times wouldn't be affected essentially, because they're already there. I mean, they're early enough as it is. I mean, now if somebody were to say, hey, I would like my kid to sleep in 10 minutes faster, or 10 minutes longer, and I look at the ride and it's like, it's one of the buses that's there at 7:17. Then I'll go to that driver and be like, hey, I've told him already, but it's just, it's just a matter of who gets on every morning. But even the longest, like if you have the earliest buses packed full, like they're still getting there at 7. I mean, I've driven them numerous times and it's 7:17 to 7:18, 7:19. So it's, that's where your 10 minutes is, they're there already parked. They're just waiting, waiting to let off at 7:30, so.
But drop-off would be later than.
Essentially, you were gonna, so if you back it up five, like it says 3:20, I mean, kids are gonna get off the bus five minutes later.
Which is just five minutes difference than what we're doing right now.
Yeah, five minutes difference, but if you push it past that five-minute mark, then your, then your subs that we're getting, so like say an activity trip leaves at, you know, 3:00 or, you know, 4:15. And that route driver that could drive that trip, now since you backed it up five minutes, can't get back, so now you're gonna pay a sub. So if you keep backing those times up, that's more trip drivers that essentially drive routes that you're gonna, I mean, I'm not saying all the time, but where you can save money, you can save money, you know, if you don't go past the five-minute mark. Now you go past five, get into 10:15, now you're affecting rural routes and everything else that was listed up there, I don't, off the top of my head. But the five-minute thing is probably about the max you can do without affecting a lot of things.
So what time would the Richards bus need to leave, the same as it is now?
It could, it could leave five minutes later. I mean, now let's say there's something happens on the four lane, but that doesn't necessarily mean, you know, it's because of the five-minute mark. Like it could happen now and it's all, you know.
So there is a five-minute.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's 15 to 18 minutes to get from our parking lot to Richards parking lot and drop us off. You know, currently we have a few students that ride their buses. If we didn't have any students who rode their buses, it wouldn't, I mean, we could back it up if it's specifically on that route, that's too wide enough to add time. But we do have a few that get on the buses right now, probably six to eight down there.
How many days would equal out an eight o'clock start time?
How many days would equal out to an eight o'clock start time?
Like adding 10 minutes to the day.
Right. Well, like if you.
If we put 10 minutes back.
Yeah, if you went three more days, would that take away the eight o'clock start time? Like how many days would this?
Mr. Wagner, probably.
Probably five to six.
Five to six days.
For that 10 minutes.
Yeah. I think, I think if we, every time we've added 15 minutes, it's made seven days difference if I remember right.
So 10 would probably be five to six.
I did that, now I may have done it wrong, I did that and I got, that we got 15 minutes times 155 days. Then I divided it by seven and a half hours and I came up with 5.2 days on 15 minutes. I don't know if that's right, but that's how you do it.
There, every, I should, that's probably correct, Coach Colley. I think every time that we've made a 15-minute adjustment, we've also added a little bit of cushion to our snow days. So that's, that may be where I'm thinking of the seven days.
I mean, I don't know if both I did it right, I just, I figured that.
And that, that's for 150, over 155, yes, that might. But, and you know, when we were doing that, we were subtracting, you know, we first did, went from 8:15 to 3:00 to 8:03. We were going 174 days, so we were subtracting from that and we went from, I think, 174 to 167, and that's kind of what I was thinking about.
And this calendar has six snow days embedded in it too, so.
I got three, I got 3.4 more days for 10 minutes.
What's the state required hours?
Required hours is 10:44.
10:44. And so at 1:92, you got six days built in, so we could miss, on this calendar, we can miss six days and not have to make anything up.
Correct.
Can you go back to the, what we would be doing on Mondays slide?
So for certain or non-certain?
I think, I don't know, you, you just, I wonder, the enrichment activities, you mentioned that, what, can you describe some of those, what that is or what that looks like?
Yeah, that's gonna look a little bit different in every building and it's gonna depend on.
Is that for staff, are you just talking about for staff?
For students, for students. So you would have staff coming in, some of the, like the STEM clubs and the art clubs, you know, some of your high school clubs and CTE stuff. It'd be an opportunity for teachers to collect career ladder hours while operating an extracurricular, essentially, each of the buildings. I don't know if any of you guys wanna touch on any of that.
Just kind of hit it.
I mean.
So just concern STEM club and things like that, art club.
I think that we would also use it probably, possibly for attendance recovery, possibly for.
Credit recovery type scenarios, those things as well. Yeah. So the kid, that student that's been struggling, having some issues wherever they're gonna come in on those days.
Right, right.
They're gonna be tutoring up and trying to resolve.
Yeah, tutoring, right now that kind of stuff is done after school or sometimes it gets pushed into summer school, depending on, you know, what that looks like, so.
Enrichment's one end of that and the tutoring and remedial stuff is kind of the other end of the spectrum. But that way, you know, you got opportunities for both students that are excelling and both students that are struggling.
Now with that, you know, I realize not every teacher has to be here. I mean, how, you gotta set some of that stuff up prior, I get that, you know, that your needs come in, this and that. Now, with a teacher coming in, whatever they do, for one kid or whatever, is that a daily worker, is that a stocking day? How's that, how's that?
Career ladder. Yeah, or volunteer basis, yeah.
So is this only feasible with career ladder advice?
There's no extra funding from the district or if the teacher is doing career ladder, that's great.
Right, I'm just saying if the state makes some changes to career ladder, they're not funding it or something, like we see that in the future. Are we, we will, then how do we look at enrichment or tutoring?
That would be another discussion with the board, but yeah, I mean, we'll have to figure out what that looks like.
It could potentially be a challenge.
Sure, yeah, oh yeah, I could completely see career ladder going the way that's outlined, as the board.
You know, in your experience, all the kids say that need tutoring or whatever, that probably most of them aren't gonna come unless school's in session.
They need some.
And then you have the transportation thing.
There's probably gonna have to be, you know, your enrichment, you know, I, that to me, I mean, maybe, but the kids that need the tutoring, you're gonna have to put something behind that. Yeah, like there's, there's gonna have to be some kind of, hey, you need to do this or else you're gonna have to do summer school. Or if you, you know, you're gonna fail this class unless you make up these hours, here's your opportunity to do that. So some incentives to give kids.
On that, you're talking, we said make up the hours, you know, about, there's too many days.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Credit recovery, that kind of stuff.
Oh yeah. You mentioned that the counselors would be continuing to assess the social needs of those students who.
Yeah.
Might be better off here at school, to put it bluntly. Is the, could we somehow look at the, you know, if we go to the hybrid schedules, would there be some way to quantify those needs? And use that as part of our assessment or evaluation of how it's going?
Yeah.
I guess I'm asking the administrators over here, because they probably deal more with.
Well, what do you want to know? I mean, how are they assessing, they assess those needs every day?
Well, I know, and what I'm asking is if there's a difference between what they're seeing this year and if we go to a hybrid schedule, do those needs increase? Is there some way to quantify that? Or are we able to continue to meet those needs?
The needs will be the same, it's just, like if you're talking about food bags, it's gonna be the same, but, you know, we need an extra day of them if we're not in school. If you're talking about like mental health, needs.
That's probably more what I'm talking about, yeah.
I mean, other than.
I think you, I think you could in a, you know, kind of a, okay, if I'm the. I think you, I think you could in a, you know, kind of a, okay, if I'm the, the counselor, I've got my profile here of, you know, these six kids, and I'm, obviously, that counselor probably is, is more in touch with, with what they need than, than some of our staff, you know, could be, and so they could, you know, just kinda keep track to make sure that this kid is still, if, if they're suffering from that, you know, those few days that, that they're not in school, you know, that's something that they could alert administration on.
With that, if, well, I'm understanding here, what you're saying, if we have teachers come in for tutoring, whatever, for those counselors that take care of some situations, Mac's talking about, would they be available by their cell phone in that timeframe, that's the school hour timeframe, if that kid is having a moment, that this counselor is the only one that knows how to fix this.
I'm sure, I, yeah, I'm sure a teacher could call.
I mean, I mean, but are we gonna establish requirement for that?
No, no, I don't think we can require that the counselor be here on those days.
What we're available by.
But I know that our, you know, our staff.
There, there, there's resources that they could be connected to, that's not necessarily that council.
Sure, sure.
And that's, and I bring that up because we, you know, a lot of us have talked about that being a, one of our major concerns about, uh, when you reduce the number of days of school, is those, is those kids that, that need school.
Yeah.
The most, uh, in different ways. And it's something that's really hard to put a number on.
Data points are hard.
And, uh, so trying to figure out some way to assess if that's increasing those needs or decreasing, you know, if we're able to continue.
Well, it's something we can definitely look at, and I can tell you that, you know, we talk about our counselors, our teachers are very, very good at spotting those deficiencies and saying, this kid needs this, and I, I've, I've seen what this kid is going home to, or whatever case may be, so.
Absolutely.
And they can help us inform, they can inform us.
And that may be something we can ask those counselors, if they have ideas on a way to kinda answer what you're, you're asking.
Has there been any, like, data or numbers collected from districts of our size that are on a hybrid calendar as to like what the participation is on Mondays? I mean, do we have, is there, like, if we go to Mountain View, do they have ten teachers and ten students on a Monday? Or is there two hundred, like, what would a, a baseline or some kind of reference be?
It's all over the place, but I, I can tell you that all the other SCA schools, they do have some staff, I mean, it varies by week, probably, depending on, on what's going on, but, um, that's what I'm saying, like, the campus is not gonna be closed, like, there's still gonna be people on campus, there's still gonna be some kids on campus.
Things are still gonna go on. Drive by on a Monday and be like, well, there's seven cars here, you know, or. And, and maybe that will be the case, I, I don't know, but I, I guess my, my thought behind that is, is that, um, based on kinda what Mac brought up, is that by not having, and, and I understand that you can control only so much, but if we don't have the doors open on those Mondays, and are those students who need it, are they truly going to come and participate?
It seems like anecdotally, we've been told for a couple of years now, that there's very little participation. Is that accurate? In people coming, like, that there's no need for daycare, there's no need for all, like, that seems to be what the message is.
That is the overwhelming sentiment that I've gotten, yes.
From other districts, but it's all been pretty well anecdote, I mean, there's no, like, hard line information.
I don't know where to, yeah, I don't know what data we would get for that, other than every other superintendent tells me it's not an issue.
Yeah, and it hasn't been well participated in.
Yeah, ones that have tried, doesn't, doesn't really work. Um, Mr. Rogers needs to, he's probably got some baseball practice that he needs to get back to.
I got twenty-five guys down the rear of the table.
Is there any other, any other elementary admin questions for you guys? Okay, sit out of here, Chris. Go, uh, go train up our state.
Go get some Royals. Yeah.
Cardinals, Royals. Robert James is joining us now as well, so, yeah, make sure you direct some questions this way.
Bring some kids home, okay?
Driving buses, yeah.
Checking you guys.
Well, I did have a question, and I, I know this would be a, I, I kinda know the answer, but, uh, one of the concerns is, uh, kids missing, uh, school because of extracurricular activities and if you only have four days, it's more impactful. Is there any way to schedule even a handful or a few activities on those Mondays, you know, that we are gonna be off to avoid kids missing school?
Well, you know, in addition to what we're already doing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Mondays, you know, we'd be business as usual, we have practices and games every Monday year round.
Right.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, to move some games.
And I'm just thinking, you know, with all the other schools that are also doing, uh, that, that are doing a
Right.
hybrid schedule or a four day week.
No, I have, I have spoke with some.
Look at that.
I have spoke with some other athletic directors about, hey, are you in, could, could you start earlier? You know, we're not in school, could you start at three? You know, I've had that kinda conversation with people.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, there could be some of that stuff, especially the starting early, if you can get, you know, your, your people that work in there, but, you know, maybe, but it's already packed, I mean, it's already, you know, Monday is already, now one thing that, um, you know, we will be there all day long, there'll be coaches there all day long every Monday because they're gonna wanna stack their practices. We, indoor and outdoor, our facilities are pretty limited to what our coaches wanna go use. So, you know, they would work together on that as far as, hey, we've got this gym, we got this field, and then they would just work together so everybody can, you know, have that opportunity to be where they wanna be, but, yeah, we, we could probably move some games around, but I mean, I don't know what, what that would be off the top of my head, cuz they're already full.
Don't you already have like three or four weeks where you have four softball games a week?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Before it rains?
Oh, in the springs.
Well, in spring, you're talking about like, like golf and, uh, track that are gone for, you know, a really big chunk of that.
Well, if you took a Monday, you could do a double letter.
Yeah, now, middle school, we have talked about that, because middle school baseball, um, and even softball, even though they got their own field now, which is awesome. But they, middle school baseball, it really is kinda the odd man out, and they, I feel bad for them, you know, when we start getting this rain and, you know, high school always gets the field first, middle school's sitting there waiting for somewhere to go. So, yeah, that'd be great on Mondays where they can go down, you can go down and practice at the big field, you just gotta talk to the high school. But we have talked as a conference numerous times about, well, maybe we need to have some super days where, where these baseball, middle school baseball kids can play a couple of games a day, just because they're missing some of the games because of the rain, and then if you do reschedule it, a lot of times they get bumped for a high school game and that kinda stuff, so, yeah, we will do that, but then you look at the pitching problem, there's always a problem, but yeah, it could happen, a couple of games a day. And we're doing a tournament, which is new this year, we're doing an SCA tournament for middle school, so, just trying to get them a couple of games in a short period of time.
With the, uh, seven fifty start time, uh, would that complicate anything with kids, you know, they eat breakfast, haven't enough time to eat breakfast? That doesn't cut anything out there as far as.
The quarter, I mean.
It should stay the same, right?
Yeah. You say the last ones get off the bus at like seven forty-five, thirty-five.
Last twenty, the Richards route is the one that comes in and then gets off in between seven forty-one, seven forty-three, it's there before, before seven forty-five. And the high school, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, they have to go containers any, I mean.
We have to grab and go.
Yeah, we have to grab and go anyway, you know, and it's.
High school kids are not, uh, coming from Richards, it's nothing.
Nothing other than high school.
So the, the seven fifty to seven forty-five in the morning really doesn't affect your deal at all?
No, no, I mean, if it was, I mean, my opinion, I'd just put all fifteen at the beginning, but that's neither here nor there, just because it, I mean, I don't think it affects anything.
Yeah.
I mean, it really doesn't, I mean, transporting kids, so.
Nick, how would that affect the high school, you know, like kids driving a little bit in?
I'll, uh, get up a little bit early, instead of coming in at seven fifty-nine, they'll ask.
Then why?
Coming in at seven forty-nine.
Yeah, I've got one, well.
A majority of the.
Yeah.
Majority of our kids.
Most of ours are in.
Most, majority of our kids are in the parking lot at seven thirty.
That's true.
Cuz we're down there like, sometimes I make, soon as the bus is getting unloaded in seven forty, I make a trip to the parking lot, like, get to the school building, I mean, majority of kids are.
You said a lot over there by seven thirty.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you, you drive by seven fifteen, there's kids parked in the parking lot already. So it's kinda like they like to talk.
Decide if they're gonna go or not.
Does anyone have more questions at this time for the administrators? Well, then we need to talk about what we're thinking. Matt, you got something on your mind?
No, I'm just waiting for somebody to break the ice. Um, I, I like the fact that the instructional hours are up on the schedule, um, I think it's a good thing, um, you know, initially fairly concerned about the early start time, but it sounds like it's a managed thing, that it's not gonna be all that impactful, but I think, you know, that's another area that we would want to watch if we were to approve this and see if that is the way we would like it to look. So, yeah, those are some high points there.
All PD days are on Mondays. Coach, you have anything to say? I thought you might have a speech prepared.
No, I don't have a speech prepared, I think that, uh, I, I think that probably all, for our, I'll just go ahead and throw it out there, we'll get it started, I think that, uh, if I heard everybody in the last board meeting correctly, uh, there was three things that I think that, uh, we, we said to the administrators that I think was the biggest issues, and that was the days that we were gone, it was a start time, and it was a block schedule. Uh, so I think that's, right now, that's a, that's a pretty big thing, but, I think most of us is trying to do four day week on a block schedule.
And with the block schedule, Mike, I would ask that the board trust the administration to, to let that ride for a year, and let's, let's look at it and see how this works with the idea that we're going to be very closely watching to make sure that our students don't suffer because of it, and making sure that we have the best schedule for our students.
I mean, I feel like this government's body, or any government's body, there has to be some compromise. And Coach had mentioned the three things that were at the last board meeting, start time, the number of days, and the block scheduling, and, you know, two of the three were addressed. And, I mean, this is, this is capped and obvious big time, but I mean, all of this situation, if it was approved, would be, you know, adjustments constantly, and, you know, internal things, like, hey, this is working and this isn't working, and being able to, to move. I think Dr. Johnson said at one of the meetings, you know, we just have to be super flexible with how we're operating moving forward. Um, I was, I was concerned about the start time, but I didn't, I mean, I drive by the school and see the buses lined up, and I'm not really looking at the clock, you know, kicking out a kid and going on, and that really doesn't affect much. I do like that the more, there's more days into the calendar versus what was in the original. Um, that makes me feel better about the, the block schedule, but again, I don't know if that's good or bad, that's just my opinion, and, um, but I do feel like, as a board, um, you guys have compromised, I feel like we need to have that kinda spirit of compromise with us to try to move forward for what's best for the district. I'm just reading the line here that says it would be difficult to change the scheduling mechanism, it doesn't say impossible. Um, difficult and impossible are.
Very difficult, yes.
There, it just says difficult, there's no variation.
I should have put an afterb on.
Yeah, that, hey, I didn't write this. Uh, and, and I, and I do understand, and I, I would definitely, you know, echo a little bit of what everyone else has said, that, you know, I think there was a couple of pretty, um, you know, definite sticking points that was, you know, just difficult to look through, and, and I, I think that would be my only concern, you know, I mean, there's some things that we'll need navigating that I think you guys have more than capabilities, and not that you don't, this too, um, I, I do still just have some concerns with that, mostly being the fact that, and, and I know you will know these numbers, but of the districts in Missouri, how many are on the block? And we would be the only district on a hybrid or four day schedule on a block, correct?
To my knowledge.
Okay, and I think that, I mean, somebody's gotta do it, at, you know.
Not necessarily a bad thing.
Sure.
But if it is, we wanna change.
Yeah, and I just think that, that, um, those are, you know, how do we, how do we curb it? If it does start to deteriorate and to act quickly, I think those would be things to, you know, definitely pay attention to, and that would be, maybe if I have uneasiness, um, that would be where mine would lie. But I, I definitely like the approach that you guys have kinda cleared up with start times and days and things like that, I think that puts that to rest.
Um, this, my, my question, we're talking about block scheduling, this and that, uh, so this is more for Mr. Owens over there, it probably affects him. I would say more, maybe after the spring, we went back to traditional to the, explain some of that, explain if we went traditional, block, out, all that affects.
Well, we have, there's a, a, um, our students that, that go to the CTE side of campus, and I call the CTE side of campus, but we do have instructors that teach core classes out of those buildings, so it's not all CTE, that is, the, the main focus, obviously, that there is core classes taught um, from some of our instructors, and next year, there'll even be more core classes taught by more instructors there, so it's not specifically all CTE. But they already take a pretty hard hit scheduling, transportation wise, to get there, so, on paper, that shows about ten minutes loss right now, every class period, the reality is that.
Each way, ten each way.
No, ten total, so five going, five coming, on paper, but the problem with that is, is the reality is that for students to get on the bus, the, the bus is loaded on Fourth Street behind the high school, so, the high school students, depending on which class they get out of in the building, if they're located anywhere, we'll say like Mr. Spencer's room, or Jennifer Martin's room, anywhere in that hall, on that end of the building, by the time they leave their room, they work their way all the way through the lobby, sometimes they have to put up their Chromebook, cuz they don't need their Chromebook, depending on which class you're going over there. And get on the bus, they don't, they don't have a chance to use the bathroom or get a drink or fill their water bottle, so, when they get to the building, you've got a considerable number of students immediately waiting in line to use the restroom, so, ten minutes on paper is what it shows up, the reality is actually twenty minutes, so that's right now, um, I would say an accurate number of what a portion of our students lose, uh, total, out, out of certain classes, and that's not every student every day, but it's, there's enough students to where I, I feel like it's a concern. So, um, obviously, you know, high school wise, I think we're, we, uh, we look at doing new stuff all the time, you know, we evaluate that constantly, and schedule is no different than that, I don't fully know as far as whenever there's talk about going to a traditional schedule, the only traditional schedule that I'm familiar with is what I had in school, and when I'm looking at that, you know, where your traditional schedule, and you guys may run the numbers on this better than me, but, you know, if you're looking at something around a fifty to fifty-five minute class period, somewhere in there, if you shave twenty minutes off that, I don't really foresee how we can make that work with any hands-on program to be effective, even if it is every day. Um, you know, if you've got a, a, you know, a welding class, or a, a structures class, or a horticulture class, or, or even our business classes, like, you would be amazed, I didn't know, so the other day I stepped into a business class and watched the students log in, what they've gotta get logged into, um, and our business classes, they log into six different areas, and Ms. Johnson made me a list of that, and it's, you know, it, it blew my mind how, how much time it takes for a student to get, you know, to Microsoft eventually, is what they're working out of. Now, obviously, by the time they're a junior and senior, they've got that polished up pretty good, freshmen and sophomores, that takes a lot, that's nothing that happens fast, so, um, I'm totally against evaluating any daily, you know, routine or schedule whatsoever, but, uh, I think we really need to, to think about that. but, uh, I think we really need to, to think about that pretty hard. And I would invite any of you that wanna spend some time, there, I mean, to, to kinda look at what that looks like every day. I think that would be great. If I was making those decisions, I would want to, I would wanna be involved and have some, some knowledge about the reality of kinda what that looks like.
Second part of the question.
Go ahead.
If, uh, somewhere down in the future, we did open up some of our programs to other schools, would we all have to get on certain days? I mean, cause right now, we're having to kind of meet this and this and that.
Sure.
You know, some of those, out Fridays, some out Mondays, how, I mean, how, how does that look towards that direction?
Well, so, I mean, so what, tech currently, you know, they deal with those same issues, Adam, so our students that go to Botech and West Plains, obviously, you know, I think there's what, thirteen sending schools that attend there, and, and all those schools have different schedules per se. So, um, all that can be done, you know, as far as looking at Mondays off or Fridays off, or maybe every third Monday, or whatever, whatever the schedule would look like. You know, that, that, that can be worked around for sure, uh, it, in that regard. Now, as far as traditional and block, you know, that's, that's kind of another conversation with, with.
We actually did have that conversation with Kabul, because Kabul was considering sending some this year, and we had talked about that and were, we had some, come up with a solution where it would work for their kids, but then they didn't follow through and, and send any this year.
Hey, Josh.
Go ahead.
Just a clarification.
Sure.
When you, you said core classes, uh, what, what do you mean by?
So Mr. Wickens currently teaches a history class there, and next year, Mr. Knapp will also be teaching a history class out of the building.
Is it, so that's, those two?
Those two, those two teachers specifically.
Mr. Knapp teaches history and psychology right now.
I forgot about psychology.
And Mr. Wickens has government, and he'll have some more government, so.
So we, and we have a.
So I just want, you know, I, I forget that sometimes, because I always use the term CTE, but there is core classes involved in those buildings too, so.
I mean, we don't have a unique set of circumstances here with the size of our campus and, you know, those, those buildings being over there, I mean, there's no way we could have ever done what we've done over there financially. And I know that some of the things that work for other districts may not work for us just because of the size and the scope of our campus.
And if I could just speak on that, just a second, what Scott's talking about, you know, one, one unique thing kind of about the CTE programs that I really never realized it, those, those teachers, you know, they, they compete constantly against other schools. So they're, they're continually competing against other schools, and they collaborate a lot with those same schools. It's a, it's a very interactive experience between, you know, FFA, FPLA, FACS, like, you know, it's, it's a, they know what other schools do. I'll put it that way. And so like whenever they, whenever they get exposed to something that another school does, and it may be different curriculum, or it could be different resources, or different facilities, like it comes up, they, 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 they bring that to our attention, you know. Not, not because they're needy, because they think it's better. Daily scheduling has never come up, changing away from that, if, uh, that actually, uh, to be honest, that, that terrifies the CTE world, the, the discussion of that. Cause it's, you're a, you're kinda putting handcuffs on, on your teachers to do the job, in my opinion, so.
Thanks, Josh.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Uh, was, um, correct me, I, I don't remember, Mr. Johnson, was middle school gonna go back to traditional or are they gonna stay on block with hybrid? I, I, I lost track of what you said.
No, I think that we could stay on block. We wanna try to mimic what the high school's doing for a couple of reasons. Number one, we use some of their teachers to teach some of our elective classes, so we need to be on a similar schedule, at least with our seventh and eighth grade, because we're using, uh, high school teachers to teach that eighth grade electives, uh, on some, so we wanna, we wanna try to mimic that, uh, if we can. I feel like at the fifth and sixth grade level, if we need to do something different, I think that we can do that fairly easily, possibly still on the block schedule. One thing that I will mention is, uh, okay, let me not get ahead of myself. We could split blocks, so in our core classes in, in fifth and sixth grade, like there's several options that we have. I've been working with, uh, Ms. Henry. We have several options there, um, and I think that we would need to be flexible with those kids, because I really feel like we need to be hitting those core classes every day with them. Uh, I think that we could still accomplish that. Uh, there's several things actually that, that I wanna accomplish, but before I forget, cause I got short-term memory loss. One thing that I will say is you, I think it needs to be considered, uh, because I didn't even really, really take this fully into consideration, but you start talking about two, three, five minutes a time on a transition, and you start talking about doing that multiple times a day, pretty quick, you've got fifteen minutes of instruction time. And we did that when we went from a seven-hour day back to the block schedule at the middle school, and I think that was a big time plus for us. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Repeat that, would you say that again for the people that aren't very.
More passing time.
Okay, yeah.
So.
Yep.
Less passing times.
Between classes, time.
Between class times.
Yeah.
You know, now you're, you're dealing with three, if you move to a, to a seven-hour day, you're dealing with six times.
Yeah.
And so, uh, you, you do five, five minutes a time per time on that, and that adds, that, that's instructional in it. That's days at the end of the, at the end of the school year. A few minutes here, a few minutes there.
But in the reverse, you're also gaining twenty minutes by doing your traditional schedule on four days, correct? You're gonna have four, four fifty-minute classes compared to two ninety-minute classes, so you're picking twenty minutes back up that way, correct?
I guess I didn't follow you on that, I'm sorry.
Four, four fifty-minute classes is two hundred minutes, right? Okay, two ninety-minute classes is a hundred and eighty. So you've got twenty more minutes of instruction on fifty minutes.
In that specific class.
Yep.
Yes.
And, but as a, and I'm sure you remember too, uh, as a retired principal, uh, a lot of things happen during those passing times. Cut those passing times in half, that's half as many of those incidents, uh, so to speak. Uh, discipline issues primarily. So I've, you know, I've worked with block schedule a lot, uh, a lot of experience, and I, uh, support the block schedule. But I also understand the, the concerns and, you know, for needing to meet more consistently. Dr. Johnson just spoke to that, that, uh, in middle school, it's even more important. Learning styles change as they get older, uh, and so repetition, uh, daily repetition is not as necessary. The, uh, time element at the, uh, CTE buildings, uh, was, is, is important, I think. We're, and we're gonna have more students over there next year, uh, and I think that, uh, it'd be really hard to, uh, to work with a seven-period schedule. But probably more than important than anything, I, uh, I trust our administration to make the decision that is best for students. And, uh, and I trust that if we did go to this schedule or this calendar with a block schedule, and it, you know, we had significant problems and issues that didn't work, I trust that we would change. Uh, you know, and I trust that the board would see to it that we would change. We have to, we would have to if, uh, we saw significant issues. But, but, but at this point, I, uh, believe it's their job to come up with, uh, with a schedule that works best for their students. And, uh, and I wanna trust that they're gonna do what's right for them. So much we're on that on this.
Um, it's been the number one thing that's been said to me through all of this here is, and it's come from people that are not in favor of the four-day week or the hybrid schedule, I think it's unfair to call it four-day week, there's several four-day weeks in there, but that's, that's not a, um, picture. But that's, that has been, you know, I don't like this, but if you're gonna do it, get rid of block scheduling. I don't know why the sentiment is that completely, but it's been without a doubt the number one thing, and it's been, there, there's been no difference in it. I mean, there, there's not some that say like, oh, you know, you can kinda do it or whatever, there's, there's a lot of people out there that are not, that don't like this. And I'm expressed this, you know, we've had that discussion. You know, so it's challenging as a board member that represents the community to have that much feedback from the community on something and, you know, just continue to push, you know, push it into place there. One of the things that I don't think we've really been able to resolve is the, the issue of, you know, a, a student missing a day and it being a full week before they get back to that class. Um, so that's a, that's a hurdle for me to try to vote something into place that has that deal there. I, I, I'm struggling with, you know, we, we came, we, we left the last meeting with the, with the, with compromise as our word there, and I think we really hit the mark on the number of days. I know, it's a pretty, pretty soft compromise on the start time, even though we, we've heard that it's not going to be an issue, um, and then.
It was thirty to fifteen, so, I mean.
That's pretty.
It's a pretty compromise, I would think.
And then as far as the, the concern that the board kinda unanimously, maybe with the exception of Mac, um, had, had, um, put out there, was the schedule. There's no compromise there, it seems like. So I, I'm just, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with, uh, I, I, I guess I don't feel quite as in, in the same boat as, as you, Mac. I'm, I'm not saying I can't get there, but, um, still have some, some issues with the, with what's being presented. You know, how do we, how do we continue to move forward with every school district around us doing a hybrid schedule? That's a pretty big challenge. I think we're gonna have to look pretty, you know, really hard at that, but, you know, if we're, if we're mimicking the school districts around us, if that's what's saying, um, nobody's doing block scheduling around us. They've had a long, long, long time, we've been doing it for thirty years, they've had a long time to, to jump on the back wagon, but nobody is.
A lot of them jumped off.
Well, just to, you know, go back to my, my first, I had the right choice for Willow, and I realize that, yes, a lot of schools are on a hybrid, and that's one of the reasons we're looking at it. Ultimately, we wanna do what's best for Willow, not just because everybody else is doing it. And there's competitive nature to it, but that's part of the reason we're looking at this, looking at this. But again, there's no way to know the block schedule will not work with a hybrid until we run it out. And I would hope that the board would trust these guys and myself to, we're, you know, ultimately, you know, you talk about a kid that's, that's missing a week, that's happened, and that's, that's happened for, for years in this current schedule. So we're already ha, that's, that's not gonna change, is it gonna be more frequent, maybe? But we need to at least give us a little time to run that out and make sure that there is a problem there before we just assume that there's gonna be a problem and this don't work. And I, I, these guys, you know, they're gonna be looking at all of those metrics and beyond that to make sure that, because nobody here wants kids to struggle, and I know that.
And another, I guess, question I have about the, the block setup, and I know that we're, we're talking about middle school and high school, so those teachers are teaching three classes a day, and then they have a, what's it, what's it?
Period.
Period, yeah, that's an hour and a half, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all the elementary teachers are teaching seven classes a day with a.
Well, not classes per se, they got a, their co-works.
I just kinda understand, is it equitable, is it, are, are, is everybody?
It's not all in, it's not all in one piece for the elementary level, you wanna?
Mr. Right on.
Or Mr. Right girl? About planning time for elementary teacher? We have no idea.
Yeah, uh, they could probably describe their planning time better than I could, I, I could explain it, but, uh, uh, in, in actuality, when, when we, yes, you could say there's four hundred fifty minutes of plan time bu, uh, for, uh, for middle school and high school if they have a plan time per day. You're talking four hundred fifty for a week, uh, essentially. You, uh, if you break it down to we have, we're planning for Maroon, we're planning for White, uh, then you're talking about the same, you're either talking two hundred seventy or one hundred eight. So, uh, depending on if you have Tuesday, Thursday one week, or Monday, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday one week. So there, there's all sorts of ways to look at it, uh, I, yeah, I do agree, I, I think, I, I, if, if I was, if I was ever looking at merit pay, I would look at elementary first, because they have to plan every minute of the day, where I would have to plan in a hi, as a high school teacher, I, I planned, uh, I planned a core class and two electives. And so I, uh, I can't, I can't, uh, I, I would, I would, I would look at elementary first on a merit pay system because of, because of that, uh, that alone, uh, but, um, I, what was the original question?
I'll say merit pays.
But, I mean, that's all that's why we admire what they do.
Yes, no.
How much time do I have off or not with kids, other than lunch?
Sixty minutes.
An hour.
Sixty, yes, one hour. We have, it depends on throughout the day, but we have one hour, and we plan reading, writing, math, either social studies or science, depending on the quarter, and grammar are all of the subjects we do every single day.
Maybe that one hour.
And it's, yes, I mean, they, they would make, it's, it's a bit of apple and oranges, because you've got high school kids, and I mean, it's, everybody's working very hard in the time that they're given, and preparation is different for everybody.
The block doesn't work on an elementary level because the kids need repetition.
Well, it's one co, it's a, it's one, you've got one co-work that's going through all, one teacher, instead of shifting classes. There is no need for a, a schedule there, they're just saying without saying.
They're just saying when they're not moving around.
Right, so. Right.
We did break eight months out of this.
And I know, I know they've looked at trying to provide more planning time for elementary, but they need to, we need to continue to.
Keep working on it.
Yeah, uh, because no doubt, Chris said exactly right, you know.
So, back to the block, Maury. Mac, you can probably help me out on this, when we put this in thirty years ago, I think it was, uh, there were quite a few other schools that went to the block.
I, I don't remember other schools going to the block.
There was other schools around there, I heard.
Maybe, I think that.
We're on the block.
I don't remember that.
Uh, anyway, they're not now. But, hey, what gives me pause about all this when we, we're talking about the block and about, you know, it's gonna be okay on four days and all that, is that we've got a hundred seventy-four schools that we know of in Missouri that are on hybrid, and I look, that's districts, which I think that equals four hundred fourteen schools, which obviously some of those are gonna be elementary, but there's gonna be, uh, quite a few middle school and high school. And I think, well, not thinking about this in the right way, but then I'll get to thinking, golly, there's nobody in the state of Missouri that's done this. There's nobody that's even attempted, so there has to be a reason why they're not doing this. I've, I visit with past teachers, present teachers, past administrators, present administrators, board members in and out of this district, and anybody that I have talked to has, they just, they just do not think that the two go together. You talk about missing a day of class, okay? You don't see the teacher for a week. Traditional thing, if you miss class on Tuesday, you're back in class on Wednesday. If you miss class on Wednesday, you're back in class on Thursday, and if you miss Thursday, you're back in class on Friday. So you're right back there with your teacher when you miss a day. That, that's pretty important, I think, because we talked about how important it is for kids to be in the classroom with a qualified teacher. I, I just, whenever I think about that, I just go back to, nobody's saying the very time.
What about when the teacher misses a day?
Same thing.
That all the students would miss out there.
Right, and it's the same thing with, I mean, in public, extra activities when they're, when they're gone for those days. So I just, uh, and, and then, I think what you were saying, well, go, you know, trust you guys and all that. Well, we seem to have a discussion about the other, but, but block, we've just kinda put our feet in stone and said that's just the way it's gonna be.
I've tried to put our feet in stone, but there are, like, we would have to change graduation requirements.
I, I get that.
There's a lot of things, and it's March.
Right, and I, I understand that, I understand the same, if we said right now, this year, we need to change for next year. Right, and I, I understand that, I understand the saying that we said right now, this year, we need to change for next year. I understand that's probably a long amount of time, okay? But what my suggestion would be, no matter what we do, is that the administration needs to have a plan in place by the time next year rolls around. That if we do need to go to a traditional schedule, that they have it worked out, not only logistically, but also be able to tell the board how much money we would save by going to a traditional schedule. Because I, from everything that I've been taught and learned, I've learned, is that there is less staff involved on a traditional schedule. So, that would be my suggestion, if we, if we do, that at least when we come back, whatever, six months from now, or however this turns out, that our administration has a plan in place in case, in case. And not say, well, we need another year, because we gotta change graduation requirements. So, we, we have that worked out.
No, no, I'm sorry, that wasn't.
No, you did that, everything.
I think our, like, completely, that's what we're gonna be looking at, and we will, you know, have those, those backup plans if this isn't going well. Because again, we all want, if, I mean, if it's not successful, then, then we're gonna change.
Right, and I think Adam asked two, two months ago, maybe, he wanted to know how much money we save by, by going to a traditional schedule. I think he asked that maybe in January. So.
Well, I can do the numbers on that, yeah.
Well, I know, that takes a, you have to do the whole schedule, and what your teachers are certified in, and how many are in the class, and all that. So, that's, that's why they're underpicking it, and all that. That's why I mentioned.
But first, they cost now, yeah, we can add that.
Right.
And we are open to having that conversation. We don't have, like, we're firm right now, that we, we can't really do anything right now, but to say that we, you know, that, that's all to say that we'll be flexible throughout next year when we're looking at this to make sure that's, that it's not working, we need to do something else, you know.
And I think one of the things that's not being said about the shirt, maybe it's eight hundred pound rail in the room, but um, we're, I mean, I mean, opinion, for me, I trust their opinion, all you administrators' opinion, but like, the thing is, that's concerning, is what Matt said. People that report or against it are no change, you know, they've been carried away. Right or wrong, they were against the block. But like, what we're concerned about, or I'm concerned about, I can't speak on behalf of the board, but I think I do, is, is if it's not working, I'm gonna be fine. All of us are gonna be fine, it's the students that's gonna suffer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're not.
Yeah, and there are measures that we're gonna.
That's what we're here for. Yeah, I put some of them out there, but there's others that we'll be looking at as well. You know, um, attendance, uh, like, we started seeing a massive slide attendance, maybe the schedule is, is part of the problem. Their GPA, you know, RTI in middle school, I R A in middle school, like, those are, those are metrics that we can look at. If we started seeing a slight, a sharp decline in that, clearly, the big change has been the calendar. And I don't know that it is a change, and at the end of the day, I'll show a big one, it's gonna be, but it is a change.
And it would be good to hear just their, you know, let's say that everything comes out pretty much awash. It still would be good to hear about their attitude, you know, their opinion about, is this the best schedule for me? Go out to third, I would say.
Right.
Go out to third B every day.
I have a question, but, so, is it possible to do certain students, beyond certain, like, say it's block? And can you do your core classes on a traditional, and then have a block for your CTE part? Is it?
There are, yeah, there, there's a lot of different variations of the block, yeah.
That you could.
And it's, there, there are some like that, where, you know, maybe one or two classes, like your math class, you have it every day. Or, um, and, and that's something, yeah, we, we can look at it, we don't, we can't do it for next year, but it's something we could look at for the future. Because we sort of know.
The CTE program, you, you're there in the afternoon.
There's a lot of moving parts, but we're completely willing to, to look at all of it.
Funny, you can do that, but that's gonna cut in half the number of kids who go to CTE. If you limit them to a block, because instead of having two classes there, they're only gonna have that one every day. So, half the number of kids would be able to be in those, like, your ag classes. Do you, you lose half of your ag classes, because you wouldn't be able to offer them.
Okay, yeah. So, course offerings becomes a big, a big thing. Like, right now, we can offer a lot of courses, and that, that kinda speaks to the staffing aspect of that. There's a lot of variables that go into that, and, and we're happy to.
Like the junior seniors, you're gonna go ahead.
It's similar, like, when they go to OTAC.
Right, that's, that's my question, is that something that could be done?
It could, but it would limit the offering.
I mean, not this year.
Sure, something we can look at.
And, uh, your advisory period is, so, if a student is struggling with their math class, they're probably gonna be with that math teacher every day.
Teacher gonna pick them. Um, not always every day, but, um, the, that math teacher can pick them for some days, and then they can opt to go into that math class, even if the math teacher doesn't pick them. They can opt to go in there, so, maybe the math teacher picks them to begin their Tuesdays and Thursdays, on Wednesday, Friday. They can pick them, and therefore, they may have another teacher if they're struggling in another class that they go to.
Can they require that child to be like a baseball player, this way? And that teacher said, I don't see that trial.
Yes, teachers have the first option of picking the kids that this one needs to come see me, or this one needs to come see me. And then students have the option after that.
We had some students the other day that missed the test, and I was checking up on them, and the, the teacher just said, well, I will pick them for advisory on next Monday, and they'll make that test up that day. So, they get an extra forty-five minutes with that teacher.
Because she recognized that that happened.
Well, she, yeah, she, they missed the test, instead of taking class time up on their class, she just, they'll be, and I'll pick them for Monday's advisory, and they'll take their test on Monday.
I wanna thank you guys, you guys worked hard on this last couple of weeks, you know, a lot on your plate last couple of weeks, and, you know, trying to meet, you know, we're just asking questions, you know, just like in the abandoned community, we're that question ourselves, we're not attacking, we're going after you, we're just trying to understand ourselves. You know, like Matt, I get a lot from feedback from outside here that are not for, maybe the hybrid, or not for the block schedule. And I hear a lot of, and we gotta take that into consideration as well, because those are our, our voters, our, our stakeholders, our, and so, so, you know, what we're hearing from you, we're hearing from them too. So, we're just trying to fit it all together ourselves.
I just wanna be able to answer, that's all I want to say. I wanna be able to say, this is why I did that, or I did that. I wanna be able to say, what if someone said, well, you know, what if you, and, you know, I would say, well, this is why I chose, I'll be open about, be transparent.
We don't want it all, we, we, we side, we want to, we all want the same thing. Be that consideration.
All right, any other comments, questions? Comments from our guests?
I have a couple of things. Um, one, I wanted to let you guys know that, um, in fourth grade, we are having the kids log into their computers most days. And they're saying login and username password goes all the way through. So, if they graduate in thirty-two, then they have thirty-two underscore their last name, and then their P M. And then we're practicing that in fourth grade. So, by the time they get to middle school and high school, they should have that mastered. Um, I work early morning breakfast duty, um, from seven fifteen to seven thirty, and there have been several days, um, that they have opened breakfast up early. And so, they've been serving breakfast at like seven twenty-two, or seven twenty, somewhere around there. And they'll just say, I'm ready, and I'll send whoever's there through. Um, and I'm a bit of an diverse person, and, um, the schedule that we have this year, um, I believe, uh, Dr. Spencer has scheduled it in somewhere between nine days, including P D and Monday's off for holidays. So, really, we're just looking at one day, cause it's ten days now, right? Did he put it into the schedule? That we would have off on a Monday?
Yeah.
And most of our serving our P D days would probably be on Mondays. Um, so really, we're looking at one day, and I don't know what high school does anymore, since my kids are out there. But if we've been doing it so far with the nine days that we missed this year, plus all the snow, then, um, kinda seems like they would be able to handle the block scheduling with, with one more day, cause that's pretty much what we're doing, is adding one more day that we would be off. If I have it all correct, I think it was nine this school year that we're out.
Is what did she say, is that P D and holidays?
P D and holidays off, so I put in Labor Day and.
So, there's like twenty-four on this schedule.
So, the blue at the, if you're looking out there, those are the days that are not P D or holidays.
I will.
Those are the, those are the.
Yeah, I think it's like, I just counted, I think it's twenty-four total.
There's ten blue ones, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-four total Monday days that are, uh, a P D day, a spring break day, an M O K day.
Oh, I didn't count spring break or Christmas, so I didn't.
These built-in days.
And those are the ones we are.
Okay, yeah, I was just listening to her, making sure that I was reading this accurately. Okay.
I mean, I just wanna recognize that you guys did do a lot of work, went back, took a lot of feedback, I think that the block scheduling, I'm wondering if, if you choose to go forward, or, or what, with the block scheduling, since it seems to be the biggest concern. Is there any way, I mean, you already have the athletic, if you have the athletic scheduling, and if you do, that could be some predictive indicators, where some students are gonna miss some days, so maybe there's some flags that need to be added to students that potentially are participating in that, and also missing potential days of class, where they go over a certain number of days, that could be another one of your metrics that you put on your scorecard that says, immediately, can we flag these students? Either for attendance, or they're missing, so that they need to maybe be proposed as remediation, or coming out on Monday, or stay late, or something to make up those days, right? So, they get the same opportunity as everybody else. Cause you, you'll need something to predictably help you to determine whether those students are missing those days, or something like that. It's more, it sounds like more high school, you know, junior high issue, so. What, what I think you need is that scorecard for that.
Any others? You guys have any other thing you want to say? All right, then, uh, I would accept a motion in here.
So, who's second?
Motion paid second, all fairs.
Aye.
Close.